I failed to mention as I opened our meeting, just a couple of rules of procedure for us. And after we finished that, it made me think of it. If any of you need to get up and leave after your point of our agenda, please feel free to quietly do so. If you'd like to stay for the whole two or three hours that we're going to be here, we'd love to. You're welcome to. I know those chairs are a little uncomfortable out there. So if you could also please silence your cell phones. We appreciate that. With that, we'll keep right on checking. Let's all rise. We'll absorb a moment of silence. Otherwise, if I mention anything, please leave us in place.
The salute flag. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next on my agenda is a public hearing to discuss the Macon County's going to vote and the sedimentation control ordinance. I presume that's what the majority of you are here for based upon the quantity of people that have signed up to speak for it. As I mentioned when I opened, one of the great things about small government is it's easy to take from the citizens of our county. We appreciate that. And I can assure each and every one of you that we hear you, we listen to you, and we take your thoughts into consideration. Again, this will be a somewhat of a public meeting. You're going to have the opportunity to speak. Go ahead and open the meeting. I ask that you'll please, while you're speaking, please note civil discourse and respect for your fellow speakers, whether you agree with them or not. I hear their opinions out. And again, they'll appreciate your respect as they will give to you. There is a three-minute time limit on your speaking time. And we'll let that fudge a little bit, but try. And I'll raise my hand and let you know when you're getting close to your time here. And we have several people to speak tonight, and we also have a lot of other county justices before the board. We're not here to criticize each other. We're here to respectfully discuss our opinions and how we might move forward with an ordinance in Macon County. I'd also like to -- I'll go ahead and I'm going to let Derek Rollin, our county manager, open this up. And I've got a couple of other comments before we get started. So Derek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, thank you. And as the chairman said, you know, that's one of the benefits of small government is being able to interact and hear the people, which is exactly what's going to occur tonight. And again, one of the very fortunate benefits, I think, we have living in Macon County. What I want to do before we start the public hearing very briefly is go through the timeline that has led up to where we are here tonight with respect to the proposed amendment. And also, I would like to go over a little kind of a where we're headed in the future after this public hearing, kind of some next steps for consideration to the board. And lastly, I would like to provide a few comments that I hope can clear up. I have received a few comments prior to the meeting, and I feel like that with some research and discussion that I've had with the county attorney as well as Jack Morgan, our Director of Planning, Permitting, and Development, I hope to answer, hopefully, or help answer some of those questions that I've received prior to the meeting. So just to start with the timeline, on February 14th, if you'll recall, that was right after our budget work session last year. Commissioner Higdon had brought up during the budget work session that we would like to evaluate the grading license program in Macon County. The grading license program was originally started in 2008, and it was made possible through the unanimous vote of the Board of Commissioners at that time. So with the motion by Commissioner Beal, we suspended the current grading license program that was in effect and passed it along to the planning board so that they could discuss it, look through it, and evaluate it as directed by the Board of Commissioners. Then, in looking back through the minutes, Chairman Tate commented on the importance of the vetting process when reviewing this program that has been in place. And that's exactly what we're doing here tonight, a continuance of that vetting process. When you move to May 16th, the Board of Commissioners voted unanimously for the planning board to take the grading license, the grading contractor's license program through a process with some public input. And that's, again, quotes from further direction of the liaison, Mr. Carl Gillespie and Jack Morgan, the Director of Planning, Permitting, and Development. Now, when it was passed to the planning board, their evaluation of this program that was in effect included months of discussions, not only on the licensure program, but the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance in its entirety. I know Chester Jones, our legal counsel, worked with the planning board as they went through, looking at this program, and then moving forward with their recommendations. In addition to the planning board meetings, the planning board held a public input or question and answer session on June 15th, which all licensed grading contractors that currently held a Macon County grading contractor's license were, received a letter, an invite to this public input session. It was also posted in the courthouse. Moving on to July of 2017, the board voted to inform, the planning board voted at their meeting to inform the Macon County Board of Commissioners of their approval to continue the Macon County grading license program by adding the recommendations that they would propose into the existing sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. And at that time, Mr. Jack Morgan presented those recommendations to the board. There were nine of these recommendations, including the recommendation to move this program from out on its own to under the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. On August 8th, Jack Morgan presented the, again, we discussed the recommendation of the planning board to the Macon County Board of Commissioners. And following this presentation, a discussion was held in which county attorney Chester Jones asked the board to consider this draft a new small portion of Section 153, which is the county's sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. We were advised at that time that we also needed to review this material in light of the full ordinance, which contains important definitions. And again, so there, the planning board voted to send it to the board on July 27th. Jack Morgan presented their recommendations to this board on August 8th. December 12th of 2017, we continued our discussion on licensure requirements and the incorporation of the same into the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. The, Jack Morgan, again, spoke with us. We heard a few comments at that meeting concerning this topic. And the Board of Commissioners voted four to one to approve holding the public hearing at the January meeting. So here we are tonight. This public hearing is the first opportunity that this board has had to discuss publicly the revised sedimentation and erosion control ordinance in its entirety, as this will be the first time that this board has discussed. When I say it's in entirety, this will be the first time the boards had an opportunity to discuss it with the amendment included. Until now, when Jack had presented it, it was into a list of bullet points. Since then, Chester has went through and incorporated those bullet points and actually put it in the ordinance. So this is the first, we're seeing it giving the public a chance to comment on it tonight. During Chester's additional research, and he'll speak to this later, we'd like to, he found some things as he was going through that, some technical changes that need to be made prior to doing anything with the document. I think that we had all, we were looking into and all aware of the fact that we were going to have to check, this is a state modeled ordinance. The sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, again, which we're simply putting the amendment into that ordinance is a state modeled ordinance. Thus, it will have to be approved by the state of North Carolina, and we'll have to receive confirmation of that from them prior to being able to have a vote of adoption. So again, before that state review, we cannot have a vote to adopt this ordinance. The public hearing, it's intended to accomplish exactly what it says. It's an opportunity for the public to be heard. And the planning board, through its exercises and its meetings, of course, all meetings are open to the public, they've spoken with the grading contractors, and they've had their public input session on these recommendations. Now, it's time for the Board of Commissioners to hold their public input session and hear the public's thoughts and comments on this proposed amendment to the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. Following the public hearing tonight, we'll evaluate all the comments that we receive in light of the amendment that's being proposed. We'll evaluate those public comments as well as comments from Jack, if he gives testimony as the Director of Planning, Permitting, Development, any planning board member that's here and would like to speak. Take all these comments, as well as legal counsel's comments and the Board of Commissioners, and take them back and evaluate them. Upon completion of this evaluation and the decision whether or not to incorporate changes to what we have now, we will, we will then send it to the state of North Carolina. So before we send that, again, that's got to be approved by the state, any change we make, because it's that state modeled ordinance, we're going to take the comments we receive here tonight from everyone in the room, evaluate those changes in light of this amendment prior to sending that document on to the state of North Carolina. And I realize this is a long drawn out process, and y'all are probably getting tired of hearing me talk already, but it's a valuable process that it ensures everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. And I think, you know, that rings true, as I was looking back, and I mentioned earlier, I was citing the importance of the vetting process. We need a process with public input. Those are all quotations because they came directly from members of the Board of County Commissioners. And again, I think that we have to remember this is a process, and this is where we're at in that process, is something that this Board of Commissioners has never taken lightly, and that is an opportunity to hear what the public has to say. Similarly, it's an opportunity for us to share the facts with the public of what is being proposed. And again, I have received some correspondence following our last meeting that seem to suggest that this is a new ordinance, or that the fundamental purpose of this ordinance, the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, that its fundamental purpose has been changed in its entirety. I've received emails that, you know, that range from the question of, well, I can't move a, I can't put a swing set up on my property if this passes. I think I've heard comments, I think we had one at the last meeting, can't put a shovel in the ground on my own property if this amendment passes. And I think going, in taking those comments and looking at them, it's important that we go back to that August 8th meeting, and Chester had mentioned, asked the board to consider this draft a new small portion of Section 153 of the county's Code of Ordinances. He advised the commissioners that they needed to review this new material in light of the full ordinance that contains important definitions. And so while we look at these questions and go back to the definitions of the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, the first page of that ordinance, Section 15302, the purpose of this state modeled ordinance, as you will find, is to regulate land disturbing activity in Macon County. That is the purpose of the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. Now, what is a land disturbing activity? And I'm reading right out of the ordinance definitions. A land disturbing activity is any use of the land by any person in residential, industrial, educational, institutional, or commercial development, highway and road construction, and maintenance that results in a change of natural cover or topography that may cause or contribute to sedimentation. So you've got to change the natural cover, the topography, and you have to contribute, the activity you're performing has to contribute to sedimentation. It's got to meet, it's got to meet to that two-part test.
Does the definition "may contribute"?
So the definition of sedimentation means the process by which sediment resulting from accelerated erosion has or is being transported off the side of the land disturbing activity or into a lake or natural water course. So there, you've got the definition of land disturbing activity, the definition of sedimentation, which that land disturbing activity, you have to meet that two-part test. And this ordinance that regulates this has been in effect since 2001. The requirements surrounding the grading license program, which we're discussing here tonight, is the only thing that has been added to that 2001 state model sedimentation erosion control ordinance in this amendment process. The nothing else has been added to or taken away from this ordinance. And with that being said, the questions that I had received via email and comments received at the previous meeting, I can say right now with 100% certainty that any activity a homeowner is currently conducting on their property, which is not regulated by this ordinance today, will not be regulated by this ordinance following the passage of this amendment. Again, we have done nothing to change the purpose of this ordinance. We have done nothing to change the definition which comprise the purpose of this ordinance. The grading license program has been in effect since 2008. Again, it was unanimously approved. Many of the themes you're seeing, the requirements that accompany this grading license program, such as the test, the fees associated with the program, they're already in place. Now, there are minor changes to some of that, but the program has been in place since 2008. And the, so the people have been participating in this program. Again, the Macon County licensed grading contractors were invited to the public input session. And with that being said, again, I just wanted to take some time because some of these questions, like, what will I be able to do with my property? Will I be able to, will I be able to build a swing set? Will I be able to put my daughter's kiddie pool in the yard? Will I be able to build a six-inch flower bed? The fact of the matter is, if this was not a land disturbing activity prior to the adoption of this amendment into this ordinance, it's not going to be a land disturbing activity after the adoption of this ordinance. And I think that's where a lot, those questions anyway, had gotten counted, the water had gotten muddied. And so I just wanted to take an opportunity for everybody out there to clear that up. This amendment was added into this ordinance. The fundamental purpose of this ordinance was not changed. I've had conversations, not only with Jack, but members of the planning board who can, who are here and will attest to the fact tonight, that the primary intent as they were going through and making the recommendations for this amendment was simply to substantiate something that we had been doing procedurally since 2008. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn the public hearing back over to you. I would, again, just say that with that, I just hope to give you a timeline, a little bit of an idea of what has led into this process, where we are heading, when we come out of this process tonight, and just a fact that I have discussed with our county attorney and as well as our administrator and members of the planning board, that I felt like that would clear up some of those questions we were getting so we could, perhaps, the public hearing could focus on the amendment itself and have a discussion on that, which, again, is not a new ordinance or is not changing the purpose of this ordinance. It is just substantiating a procedure that we have had an effect since 2008.
Thank you, Ms. Manager.
Yes, sir.
Board, any questions?
Actually, you're going to mention the substantial changes to the license requirements before we start.
I think that Jack's here tonight, and he was going to, if we have any, or we can do that right now.
Just clear that up. If they, that type.
Go ahead. Get ready. Y'all want? Yeah, feel ready.
Would be appropriate for us to comment, Derek, or wait for him to end or how?
Yeah, that's fine.
The only question I saw, is I see this is a two-pronged amendment, and the grading license, and that's, we discussed that, the exclusions, the exceptions in the proposed amendment is what raises my questions, Derek.
Uh huh.
And the original grading license program, there was no mention of a landowner doing whatever, land disturbing activity on his property. And I asked Jack in the meeting if God wanted to build a cross-tie wall on this property, would that qualify as land disturbing? And his response was yes. So if you go to the definition of land disturbing activity in the complete ordinance, and then you look at this, where a private landowner on this property may have a little backhoe or a shovel or whatever, and he wants to do something that qualifies as a land disturbing activity, that one definition, then he's got to go take this open book test, as worded in the amendment, and then sign an affidavit that he will not sell or transfer that property for a year. What's the history of that? How does that work? And how did that fit if that's not a change to the original grading license program? How do we address that?
Right. And again, there are some, and Jack, if you could address the questions, kind of let the, give the planning board kind of the discussion that ensued on each of these. There are minor changes, as I said, to the grading license program itself. There is no fundamental change to the ordinance, but the program that we've known since 2008 has been, there are some changes to it that have been put into this ordinance. Now, still, it does not change what is a land disturbing activity and what is not. For the land disturbing activity, and as Jack will attest to, I think you've got to first put it through that two-pronged test. Do you remove the natural ground cover? Do you change the topography? And do you contribute to sedimentation, which is the silt or sediment leaving the site? So I think.
Or going into a river or natural water course.
So I think all that, and it's a, you know, this, in this ordinance, if you'll read, when you read through it, and I'll call you and I've discussed, it puts the, the ordinance puts the property owner in the half acre or more. If you kind of look, there's a one section in that, when you're talking about a half acre or more, that says it is the responsibility of the person conducting the land disturbing activity to come into the building inspections office, to meet with the ordinance administrator. Right. That's covered. The same, the same kind of thing, I think it is right now, and I think the intent, and I'm sure, I'm certainly not meaning to speak on behalf of the planning board, but I think the intent was to continue with the spirit of how this was being enforced procedurally, but not to change the substance of what was considered land disturbing activity. No changes have been made to the purpose or the definition that make up that purpose. So I think up until now, you know, it's, and that's when, you know, you look at the questions like, well, can I put a swing set up? Well, are you, would, if you were going to put a swing set up before, would you have went in and talked to the administrator of this ordinance? I think if that retaining wall is on a sloped bank with a property down below it, that it's clearly, and you're removing that ground cover, and it's clearly going to create sedimentation, which is leaving the site, then it's a different conversation than if you own 10 acres and that retaining wall is in the middle of a 10-acre field and is not going to contribute to sedimentation leaving the site. So it's all relative, and this ordinance not, it builds in the discretion of that administrator to have those conversations with the individual as they're going to come in and submit the plan. And up until now, I can't think of any complaints that the process that we have in place, while it hasn't been substantiated in the ordinance, I can't think of any, or I know I haven't had any complaints of an onerous application of this ordinance by the administrator. Jack was here when this was in effect in '08, or would you just, had you just came back?
Came back in '02.
Jack had been here when this was in effect, and he saw that, he saw it come into effect the first time, and has been working and furthering the procedure since it was put in place in 2008. And I don't think with this, Jack, it was your intention to change the overall spirit of what you've been doing since 2008?
If it's not.
Right. Well, Jack, could you speak to any discussion the planning board had, I guess, leading up to kind of the question that Mr. Higdon had?
Mr. Higdon's question is what I'm addressing. It's like they're saying, talk's cheap, but making a repair on somebody else's property or getting sedimentation out of the stream is not cheap. So our thought with this owner contractor thing was that we'd rather have the conversation with the owner before he does something that does hit him in trouble, that doesn't cost him anything to discuss it, didn't cost him anything to be able to do this. We just want a knowledge-based test that you're going to be able to capably keep that so long, your property. That was the intent of this. The reason it came up at all is the majority of our complaints are based on people that did something on their own property. It's not these contractor guys. They know what they're doing. They're not a problem.
Why do you need a license?
I'm sorry?
Why do you need a license if they're not a problem?
Well, most of them got a state license.
Okay.
So, but we do have a lot of people that, a lot of contractors, I will say a lot, I say several, that operate basically under the $30,000 threshold, which requires state license. This would give some validity to them, because if the homeowner says, what kind of license do you have? What kind of certification do you have to do this kind of work? I don't have anything. That's not a good answer, especially if you want, if you need the work. So the reason, that's the reason for the license, primarily, as well as education. This is more an educational opportunity than it is an enforcement opportunity, is the way I said, Mr. Higdon. The planning board was pretty much the same way. We talked about all kinds of education. Who is it came presented the H2O program with their county, established in western North Carolina, where it's, groups of counties offer this education to people. So that's, in my opinion, Mr. Higdon, the purpose of this. I'm not going to answer your question now. And I will say, while I've got the podium for just a second, the planning board worked hard. They debated this back and forth amongst themselves with the contractors, with the attorney president at meetings, and I've got a lot of emails and some calls, discussions from the planning board members that have seen this, where their thoughts were. So this has not been in the dark, it's not been overnight, it's not been underhand.
Jack, there's been so much Indianio and just plain old, you know, stuff put out there that's just not true, that this board's looking at this ordinance. The reason it was always here was originally pious. It was originally pious, not for most of these boys sitting in this room. These people go out here and rent and track those, which we battled through, you remember it well, renting the track home, renting the equipment, going to the fisher property, and absolutely running not only it, but the neighbor's property. And it was case, it was several cases like that. And this was intended to be an educational process where those people had to come in, and they had, somebody needed to know what was going on before it was too late. You stick a big track on the ground, it could be too late in about two hours if we found out. That was the gist of the soil erosion when it first started. That was the gist of it. And then he had stayed in, and it's like Derek said, if you read the ordinance, there's nothing really changes here. I think what the, if the owner, I don't know, I've been in the business about 38 years, I don't know of no owner, maybe one, that done his own grading for his house that was not a grading contractor. And that's really what this speaks to, the situations like that. You're talking about a half acre, nothing has really changed in the definitions where we started from. Now, the license requirements have changed and are going to make it more simple, I think, we hope. That's the whole idea of the thing. But the thing about you can't plant a bush, you can't do this, can't do this on your own property, that's just been both way out of proportion, and people are not getting licensed, they even got a letter saying that the people who've done the English didn't get their license, their grading license. Well, they did. And a lot of people don't need grading licenses, you know. And a lot of people don't need grading licenses, you know, the landfill, for instance, they don't need a grading license, true, that's, they're under the state regulations. So, and if you own, and I think you go again to this, but if you own a state grading license, you know, I think we all agree, there's no reason to have a Macon County red license, and that's in here. So it's been a lot of stuff that we couldn't answer because this is the place to answer those questions for these people sitting in this room. So I just want to throw that in. Little history.
And that license is not recognized anywhere except if they can count.
That's right. That's exactly right. That's what it was intended to do. We can't have what goes on in Jackson County, we don't have to take what little water we got here.
If there were people in, like, hey, look, people come out of Andrews, do the work Highlands, a lot of people out of Sapphire, it's going to take a lot of chasing people down. And the initial program was never in, I don't think it was ever enforced adequately. You said it saved a lot of strains and stuff, but I'm grading, I mean, not grading.
The idea was not enforced when it started, was it, Jack?
It's in there.
Well, but yeah, but it was, the idea was to educate when it was to enforce.
It's whack and fly, that's, to me, is the intent.
Jack, is, the discussion here just centered upon location, if somebody from another county comes in, probably needed, how does this work for the two municipalities within the county?
If we have jurisdiction within those municipalities, it would fly. The town of Highlands has their own Russian control and sedimentation program, so we have no jurisdiction.
What you do, you wouldn't find one at this county.
If they can want to start to run this, certainly up the building.
Yes.
And that's a land disturbing activity, or that I have paper?
It, by the definition, and I didn't make this definition out of the table, it's, you got to change the property, you remove the cover, and you may, you can have sedimentation.
But it doesn't apply to, I mean, it applies to less than a half acre, it applies to anything you do on your property that removes a natural ground cover or changes a topography.
And, and results in sedimentation, leaving your property and going to someone else's property, or entering a stream, or a natural water course, or a lake. May contribute.
These are legal definitions.
Jack, any further questions here?
Jack, in your, in the time you've enforced this ordinance and went through this ordinance, do you, in your opinion, I mean, has this, are these, is the changes that have been made, not to, again, not to the ordinance, but when you take what we've been doing in practice and putting it into the ordinance, is it going, in your opinion, to result in an increase in your, increase in your workload, or are these?
I feel it probably decreases, because knowledgeable people are less likely to commit violation. I mean, do a lot of people that want to do work on their property, they know how, what this trapstream buffer is? Do they know what a trapstream buffer is? How far it is? Do they understand watershed development regulations that are state mandated? Do they understand DOT requirements if you put a driveway into the DOT? There's a lot of things that we answer during the application process that keeps us from having a workload out in the field.
And is that, is that kind of why the, with this, and we've talked about some of the changes, the, when the planning board had sent the invites to the grading contractors, is the reason those were sent to the grading contractors is because this is primarily who's affected by this?
That's who's affected them, yes. At the, it's like the old way we did it, everybody had to have license, but if you got a state license with new program, you wouldn't have to. But we wanted their opinion on this license program, because they are grading contractors in this county, so we needed their input.
Anything further before we open up the public portion? All right, and we're going to look forward to taking some comments from the public now. Just to remind you of a few things that I mentioned earlier. Again, this is a public hearing, so it offers everyone in the county, whoever wants to come and speak, the opportunity to speak to this, either for it or against it, or impartial, or maybe some thoughts on improvement, or again, or maybe completely. I think it's been stated by Derek Chester, if you'd like to weigh in on this comment, this board's not going to be taking any action on this tonight, other than some discussion, because there's a lot more to it than what we're going to be able to do tonight, correct?
I think that is correct. Furthermore, you need state approval, not just review, but approval, and I suspect as a result of this hearing tonight, there will be some ideas brought to board attention that may need to be incorporated. We're in a process right now. I envision the likelihood of an additional public hearing on this matter before it would actually be a law.
Oh, I've got term process now. Again, three minute time limit, just trying, I've been to enough of these, since I've been on this board, to see that sometimes civil discourse does not always happen, but just please try and be respectful of everyone, just like we're being up here. We're here to hear your opinions, we want to know whether you're for it, against it, and why. The why is the big reason. We want to know the things we can improve, or again, maybe not have it at all, we want to know, we're here to discuss. So with that being said, let's get started. First on the list is Mr. Howell Jacobs.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call me in on our veterans that were here a while ago, what they did for the freedom of our country. And it seems like anymore, the government's taken away part of our freedoms, the county's taken away from our freedoms. If we want to do certain things, we have to come to the county courthouse and say, hey, can I do this, or can I do that? Different ordinances. And I know this sediment erosion control ordinance is kind of questionable, and I'd actually like to ask Paul, if these new amendments to these ordinances, how is that going to benefit Howell Jacobs and Hannah Haylen? Any at all? If I want to do a little bit of work on my property, like upriver spanking, go through the, run the gauntlet to do certain things, I'd ask you this too. If we use just the old, put in the action the ordinances of the old ordinance of the sediment control, would everything be just as good rather than adding all these new amendments? Is the old ordinances, why didn't they work if they're put into action, make sure that it's done? Would the new amendments-
Ow.
Help anything?
Ow.
That's all I've got to say. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty reading. It looks like, is it Danny? Is that correct? Your last name, sir?
Smeltzer.
Smeltzer, thank you.
Right.
Are you a doctor?
Not hard. Normine excavator. But I did, I did have some concerns about, about the amendments to the ordinance, and that was, they were talking about earlier about me having to sign an affidavit about me. I live, I live very, well, right on Otter Creek, so I want to protect that and do everything I can to keep it clean, because I have trout in there. So with that, with that in mind, anything and everything I can do is going to be to protect the stream. Now, if I have dead trees, I have a little over three acres there, if I have dead trees and what have you that I need to clear out, it's six tenths of an acre, then I have to come over here and take tests, and, or, I don't have to take the test, I just-
You want me to do nothing?
I don't do anything?
No.
Okay, but I do, do I have to sign an order?
No. No, then it's over, are you disturbing the land?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to disturb the land?
Yeah, I'm going to take, yeah, I'm going to take out the roots, or those stumps and stuff like that, and put a metal-
Derek, you want me to explain that?
If it's not a, just like today, if it's not a land disturbing activity today, as we said earlier, which is what this ordinance regulates, if it's not a land disturbing activity today, it's not going to be a land disturbing activity after these amendments are passed.
Okay, all right. Did I misunderstand the whole thing?
Now, if, second part to that, if this is a land disturbing activity, then it would, you would have to take the grade, you would have to get the license.
Yeah, I read a track of work about-
But, but until, right, but until that the administrator reviews, or has, or reviews or looks at, if it's going to be close to the creek where you feel it would be close enough, hey, there could potentially be sediment leaving and going into the creek, then, you know, you would need to take that to the administrator, if you felt like the project was going to get to that scale, where it would create a potential to cause sedimentation or erosion into a natural water course.
Can I do it myself?
Sure.
Then I have to take the test, right?
No, not if it, no, not if it's not land disturbing activity. And that-
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, it-
I don't understand land disturbing.
Right.
Anytime I tear the ground up on top, that's land disturbing, right?
A land disturbing activity is any use of the land by any person in residential, industrial, educational, institutional, or commercial development, highway and road construction and maintenance, that results in a change in the natural cover or topography, and may cause or contribute to sedimentation. If you're cutting trees down-
Taking up stumps.
If you're taking, if you're taking up stumps-
Yeah.
Then is the sediment leaving, is the sediment going into the creek when you're taking the stumps up?
It could be, I've got, I've got to put a buffer up there and keep it from doing so, it's got like that grass and what have you there.
Well, right now, when, if you come in and go over this with the administrator, and he says, hey, yeah, this is going to meet the definition as said in this ordinance of land disturbing activity, then yes.
Then I've got to sign an affidavit saying that I can't sell my-
That would be a part of this amendment as proposed, yes, sir. Now, if he, if it's-
Question to you then, is how many of you in here know for a fact that you're going to be alive in six months? You're asking me to sign that thing for years, saying I can't sell my property, I can't transfer, can't do anything with it, for a year. I don't have a clue what's going to go on in six months.
Right.
Or my, or my family has to be over six months or something like that. To me, that, that's really kind of, I don't know whether that's stand-up, or to be honest with you, I really don't. And as far as controlling it all, or maintaining it, you're charging fees for people to come over here, take these licenses and go have everybody, I'm talking about the contract, in other words, you're going to have to, you're going to have to keep up with that improvement. Highlands to Bryan and that to Haley, it's going to take a lot of people driving the roads, making sure people aren't here taking advantage of your land. I think personally, plus in Macon, where I'm in, everybody, or anybody that I have anything to do with, the work for me is going to be from Bryson City or Robbinsville or Andrews, and each one of those in a different county. Are y'all going to go to those people in different counties to make sure that they have the same? Because if they come over here and take the same test, if the job is ever done, you know. There are a lot too, you know, we, we're going to do this, and that's it.
Thanks, Danny. Good comments, good comments, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Randy Shutt.
Gentlemen, with all due respect, I'm having a really hard time hearing.
Me too.
Is those microphones up?
You having a hard time hearing the speaker?
Thank you, gentlemen. Allow me to speak out this again.
Thank you.
I have several major concerns on this thing. And the more I read, it seems like the more I get confused. While I read on this new proposal, any land disturbing activity, no matter the cost, is we're going to have to come in and take tests, or even get grading license, or whatever it does. It's, I've got several different types of property, and I do improve, it's constantly helping. I don't want to run Franklin every time I decide to flatten out a little piece of ground and make it look better, or do something like that. So that's, I'm very concerned about what I can do on my own property. And the Macon County Soil Erosion Ordinance says we can clear up to a half an acre without an erosion control plan. I'm concerned that you're going to ask me to come in and get a grading license, or take the test and pass the test, just to do, do projects on my own land. I think we're going a little bit overboard on a lot of this stuff, but everybody I know takes a lot of pride in having the property work. And I've seen very few bad operators come to Macon Haley and make messes. You build a name, you get a reputation, a good work, and that's who people are going to hire. And under that exception, I'm at, my property owner being pinwires for doing improvement projects on their own land. I care a lot about my property. Looks like most everyone owns over there. I signed an affidavit saying I will not sell my property for one year after improvements is done, it's ridiculous. It sounds to me like a dictatorship instead of democracy. Okay, in case of emergency, I've got a personal driveway, it's about a hundred mile long, and if I was to have a slide on my driveway, and I had an emergency, and my house was on my primary, do you expect me to come over here and get a grading permit before I move that slide, get an ambulance or a fire truck in? It's just, I just, you want to take fault. See, a lot of common sense not put into this thing, and I hopefully can shave some of these things off of this thing. Thank you, Randy Shutt.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Sorry, Derek, shall I say?
Tinsley.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Tinsley, I'm vice chair of the planning board. Joe Deal is chair, he called me today and said he couldn't be here. I want to thank Derek for giving us that background of, because of the timeframe of how we did this, but it was that in the late winter, early spring, we were asked as a planning board to look at the licensure program, and in June is when we met with contractors and talked with them, the ones that were there. And in July, we kept tossing this around and formulated the part, the new part that you see in the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance. As we talked to the contractors, it felt to us like most of them were in favor of doing this program, if more bite could be put into it, if it could be lifted up a little bit from what it had been, and mean a little bit more to them. After, as I'm on the planning board, after I think about our mission statement, one of the first things that came to mind, as I said in that meeting, is asking the contractors, does this help you? Have you had situations where it really helped you to have this, this license? And some of them indeed said yes, that it did. Gave them some credibility. So that meant something to me on the personal level as I, as I listened to their comments. I was surprised, I'm an antique, I'm not on social media, so I was really surprised that this had gone this far with, and maybe it's true, the planning board needs to go back and revisit some of this definition of, of land disturbing activities. I don't know about that, but I just felt like we were focusing on one thing, looking at the contractor license program, and I think we came up with a, with a good solution. You look at these things from your own personal background, and I know I've been privileged to see the work of just great Macon County contractors, and I don't want to do anything to hurt, hurt them. So that meant a lot to me, and then, I'm a former teacher, when I hear the word test, my hackles kind of go up, because I taught a lot- my hackles kind of go up because I taught lots of young men that I knew could get out there and do a great job grading and building roads, but I was worried about this test aspect, so I got a copy of the test and I looked at it, and I learned that it was open book. And as I say, you know, that was just my, my radar kind of went up on the, on the whole test thing, but as I looked at it, I showed it to one contractor, he did not think it was, you know, an onus on anybody to, you know, that they should have that knowledge as they went in to do, do the work. So, again, kind of surprised at all the, the new things that have come out after we talked about this, but I feel like placing it where we did, and the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Ordinance just adds to the validity of the program, and again, we were trying to, to give this thing a little bit more status possibly, and, and we're focusing on the licensure program itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Randy Wallace?
Well, as you ones are well aware, many people are questioning this proposed amendment. For starters, do we have erosion control problems in our county that are not already covered by state regulations? What problem is this proposed amendment meant to address? Is it erosion and sedimentation, or occupational licensure, or what exactly? Who is it designed to protect, and what is the likelihood that it will do so? It addresses monetary value of work less than $30,000, but isn't monetary value as a determinant rather arbitrary? Will a state licensed contractor required for work above $30,000 also need a county license for jobs under 30,000? How much soil can be disturbed, and by whom, and what kinds of soil, and on what degree of slope? And who decides the potential, the may word, the potential for erosion and sedimentation? Do we have a soil scientist on staff in the county? Who will enforce violations? Who will decide if a $500 per day penalty is issued? And is that a fine for disturbance, disturbance of soil, or for being unlicensed, or for refusing to take a test? What is it for? Has there been a cost projection for actually administering these required tests to do all this enforcement for every citizen who wants to disturb soil on their own property? Does the required test for a county grading license apply to someone who wants to plow up an acre of soil to plant elderberries to sell at the flea market? Or to construct a dirt block? Or a hog wallow? Or a half acre family cemetery? Why would you want to test and manipulate someone ahead of an activity rather than dealing after the fact with the minuscule number of people who actually do cause erosion? Penalizing them for any actual damage they've caused? Are you sure that you can legally require someone to not sell or even advertise their property for sale for some arbitrary length of time regardless of its condition? Isn't that some kind of violation of individual property rights? Macon County has in place a number of protective programs that benefit longtime property owners here, including present use value taxation, which is one of the most beneficial aspects of property ownership in our county. A program that contributes to stability and historic preservation of agriculture and forestry and our environment. Also valuable for property owners is the VAD program, V-A-D, Voluntary Agricultural District, a program offered by our county's Soil and Water Conservation Office, whereby a property owner, through deeds in the courthouse and public notice signage provided by the Soil and Water Conservation Office, can notify the public, neighbors, and potential buyers that your property is agricultural and that you will be engaging in commonly accepted agricultural practices involving noisy machinery and the use of products that some non-farmers might find disturbing. This is the kind of county government we need, the kind that looks out for our well-being without micromanagement of our livelihood and threats of fines. And I urge all landowners to look into these programs. This proposal, however, as now written, this amendment tied to the rest of it, is a solution in search of a problem. It's poorly written, vague, and open to multiple interpretations. The intention might be good, even admirable, but it has no clear rationale or focus. Ostensibly, it is about prevention of erosion and sedimentation, but in effect, it's about revenue generation and occupational licensure. It's an exercise in arbitrariness and governmental overreach of the worst kind, the kind that just creeps upon you and houthis you. This proposal is largely unnecessary and is more of an impediment than a benefit to our county. This proposal needs to be scrapped, or at least seriously rewritten, clarified, and refocused as to purpose and implementation in a manner that respects and protects the personal property rights of our citizens. We live in a beautiful rural environment, and we are well aware of the consequences of mountain living, including natural disasters such as the Peaks Creek debris flow and the human-caused wildflower disaster. And now, we must work to protect our property rights from such dire consequences as this ill-conceived and ill-advised proposal.
Thank you.
Have we established that this regulates land disturbing activity under a half acre? Is that clear?
No.
Have we established that this 153.23 licensure requirements will affect people doing land disturbing activity under one half acre?
We're discussing that tonight.
Mr. Jones, you wrote the ordinance?
No, I didn't.
You didn't write this amendment?
No.
Did you give legal counsel to, if it establishes, if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre?
Did I give legal counsel?
No, will you give us legal counsel?
I will give this board legal counsel.
Okay, well, the board member asked Mr. Jones the question of if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre. Because that's how you guys are selling it. I mean, this might have been a good intention, but a lot of you good commissioners who I like, and I'm the bad guy here, you're going after me pretty hard, because I'm going after you pretty hard. It's not well-written. It's just not. And I'm sorry to be the bad guy, because here in a couple of weeks, I'm going to have to start working with you real hard on some projects that I want to help the town and the county get done.
Are you representing the town here tonight, David, or...
No, sir, I'm not, I'm a, I'm representing as a citizen of Macon County.
I disagree.
Yeah, I mean, can anybody answer the question, if, if this regulates land disturbing activity under one half acre?
Did you read it initially? Potentially, we're still discussing that tonight.
Can you ask your attorney representative for his legal counsel?
Yeah, I'm sure he will, go ahead.
I, I've already asked him, he won't answer me.
Continue on, we'll get to it.
I mean, that's my question. I, I think, I think a lot of them have covered it already.
I'd be happy to. Sure, go ahead. I, I think that the proposed amendment could well result in situations where this amendment at least would apply to situations of less than a half acre.
If?
If it is a land disturbing activity that is defined, as defined by the land disturbing activity ordinance.
This is, um, this is left up to an administrator too, and this carries a $500 per day fine to your constituents. Let that sink in. This is an arbitrary definition, this to be interpreted by an administrator, that carries a $500 per day fine. This is serious, and that's why I'm making such a big deal out of it. Deliberate, think about this, think this through, read it, understand it. These are legal definitions. I hate it to have to interrupt here twice, but they're legal definitions. This man's an attorney. People who are attorneys will take somebody and break them over the coals using this ordinance. If the land use administrator thinks it's a land disturbing activity, that's $500 a day. It can also become a class two misdemeanor. You could face jail time. Here in a society, when we're trying to get people to use their hands, get them back to the land, we're trying to get shop classes and hands-on classes back in high schools, here we're trying to limit people from actually using their hands and using their land? I've done land disturbing activity. Some of the most content days of my life are after I've looked at my yard and landscaped it, and I am beat, and I'm about to fall over and my feet hurt, but I look what I've done and I say, man, I've done a good job and I'm tired. That's rewarding in life, and we're taking that away from people, one ordinance at a time, and it's wrong. If you want to regulate soil erosion and sedimentation, enforce the existing ordinance. It is extensive and intensive and prescribes fines for people who violate it. We don't need a grading license program that forces people to sign their rights to their property away, take a test, and that can fine them $500 per day at the discretion of an administrator. An administrator. Thank you, gentlemen.
Randy Wallace there?
Thank you all. My comments are general, but they are brief. I want to thank you all for your service to Macon County, its citizens, and its natural resources. That's kind of what this, at the core, is all about. For over 20 years, the Little Tennessee, excuse me, Watershed Association, Land Trust for the Little Tennessee, and now Main Spring Conservation Trust, has worked to conserve the waters of Little Tennessee River and its tributaries, as well as the lands surrounding these waters. As you know, sediment is the leading pollutant to our mountain streams and rivers. The primary goal of many of Main Spring's conservation and restoration projects is to minimize sediment input into our streams. Main Spring supports sound land management practices such as those promoted, promoted in this ordinance. We encourage the county to continue taking the necessary steps to protect these clear mountain waters that provide ideal fish habitat, drinking water, and recreation by keeping them free of sediment and other pollutants. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, B.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who's not signed up? Your name, please.
Angela Moore.
Angela Moore.
I really understand the intent of this ordinance, but your desire is to protect the property rights of people who are adjacent to people who are grading their lands. This is no small issue, and, and I know that this could be disastrous for someone uphill of them digging on a property line and causing landslide or erosion into their property. But I am concerned about some of the wording, not to be the dead horse, but the use of the word "may" in land disturbing activity, it creates fear, especially people who've had less than positive run-ins with the government before, or like many of the citizens here who have a tendency to have a general distrust. I think that finding a way to reword that would probably go a long way to making people more comfortable with this. Like I said, I know that that's not anything new, but it may serve the public well. The other big wording thing that I would really like to see you guys address that I haven't heard anyone mention is, well, excuse me, obviously there's the, the affidavit, I'm, I'm very much against that, the idea that you would have to sign something like that is, is decorable in my opinion, but it's not just that. I've heard, all of you repeatedly say that if you're not engaging in land disturbing activities, you don't need to come in and do the license, which means if you're not causing sedimentation. But there is another reason that you would need the license, if you're grading. The term grading is used, under exceptions, this section shall not apply to anyone who is actually performing the grading or land disturbing activities on property they personally own and do not sell or offer sale or transfer to another party per period of one year after completion. The term grading is not defined, so we would have to rely on a general definition of grading. Now, something we see around here all the time, especially people with farm equipment, is they stick the grader on their tractor and they grade their driveway, or their mother's driveway, or their neighbor's driveway, or, you know, maybe that comfy spot in somebody's front yard that's relatively flat, it's not land disturbing activity, but it definitely, under this definition, it requires a license. My husband and I are in this exact situation. We have a yard that's had several tree stumps removed. In fact, we rented the equipment and did it ourselves. We've seriously considered renting a grader, so that our children don't turn their angles running over the humgy land. While this most certainly wouldn't be land disturbing activity, it would be grading. So I would ask you to consider removing that term or defining it in a way so that it would not encompass everyone. My preference would be that you not require private citizens to get this kind of licensing at all, although I do understand that it creates a more difficult enforcement for, for our, our building department, but it's actually something I'd like you to consider asking them to bear that burden. Not because the work is easy or because they should have to do it, but simply because the cost of not bearing that burden is taking away our private property rights. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing what you do.
Thank you.
One of Dennis Moore's comments about the term grading, that is one of the technical changes that I would be recommending to this, is to take that term out of yet.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone else? Any questions from the board?
Chester would be appropriate to place the public comment.
Most important, to make sure one more, one last time, if anybody else has a desire to speak, whether they were on this, signed up or not.
Anyone else like to speak? Going once, going by soul? All right. I'd also like to, might put in the record, I received, I'll read the names, nine emails, four, the proposed change, Kathy Stillwell, William McLorne, Nancy Scott, Chris Hanners, Susan Urban, Mr. and Ms. Glansky, Jean Honeycutt, Bill Crawford, and I received one email from David Koffeber against it. So we replace those in the record. We're still going to discuss it some more, so. I'm going to close the public session just to get us...
I'll sign another paper.
We're still going to discuss, if you want to hang out and listen, so.
No, it's not about the ordinance. I signed another paper.
It'll, it'll come up after we, we get, close this anyway. I'll go ahead and start and lead us off with things that I've heard tonight that, uh... I'll go ahead and start and leave this off with things that I've heard tonight that made me open my mind a little bit about this potential change and it'll give me something to ponder until we can potentially discuss this again, as one is, as a size one, for a part. I don't think that there's any of us in here, well, let me rephrase that. I think we all could potentially understand the intent if you get an out-of-hand neighbor with bulos or how it might adversely affect you. So I think there's a purpose and intent for what the planning board and potentially this board is trying to do. Is there a reason, maybe it might cure some of the clarification issues, which there seem to be a whole lot of miscommunication, misunderstanding of how you interpret certain words and that sort of stuff? Is the size of it? Is it a quarter acre? Is it an eighth of an acre? Is it an acre? Maybe there's a size of it on it. I also wrote down the word vague because there seems to be a lot of confusion in the room tonight about what's, what actually can do, what you can't do, and even David was looking at me earlier. I couldn't answer him. I don't know. I'm still learning, too. I'm up here trying to understand and trying to make good decisions from the county based upon all the information that I can gather. I think that's part of being a good, good public servant. I wrote down the word confusion. Again, there seem to be some confused looks in here, including myself. And I wrote down the idea, the term that I picked up, too, which is education. I think that's part of the intent of what's trying to get across here, is trying to keep people from doing something wrong. Is it the right way? Is it the wrong way? I'm still pondering that and still thinking about it. I think education is a good thing for everybody, especially on this topic where it can adversely affect potentially our streams, our waterways, and our neighbors. I will be pondering those, and I'll welcome any of the other commissioners to provide their thoughts as well.
There were some very good points brought up, I think. Ms. Wallace brought some very good points, as it's been laced with it, and why is it there in the first place? That's what you've got to remember. Why was it implemented in the first place? And it was like Ms. Moore said, to prevent that neighbor from turning the water down on you. We still have those problems today. Jack can attest to that. And I think the man mentioned, if you have a slide in his driveway, if you forget the second part of that ordinance, is it going to endanger the water? We're trying to protect the water stream and to protect the neighbors you're joining neighbors. That's the whole idea behind the whole thing, and that was the intent of it when it started. It's still the intent today, I believe, Mr. Man, unless I'm reading it wrong again. It's still the whole intent of the whole thing, is to protect your neighbor. And if you're moving tree stumps out, and if you're on Otter Creek, and you're moving tree stumps, but I really, and I voiced it before on the affidavit signing, I think that's something we just really need to think about. Because I think there were some good points made on that. And if, you know, we're trying to prevent it before it happens because now it's got so expensive, and there's cases to be documented. If you do let that water, if you do do work on your property, it gets on somebody else's property, it is a major deal. We've been down that road, too. So, but there was some good points made, Mr. Sherman, and should even have a public debate.
I agree. I agree. Good discussions, Mike. Eric?
I think the number of things that made me perk up a little bit, it's that you're, a lot of times, you have access to another county, and those people then have to have qualifications for here. And I think that's a red flag for me, whether you're going to Raven, you're going to Swain County, or Murphy, or anything. Anybody that's coming from another county, let's just say Andrews, coming to, up to Nalahala to do some work, they're out of county. So that's something that I'm thinking about. How do you correct that? Also, the death part, the gentleman that brought that up, that's something that, I've read this a number of times, that needs to be looked at. Go back and talk about the emergency situation on your property. If you have an emergency, the road goes into the creek or whatever it may be, you know, how do you respond? How are you able to respond with that legally without being in a situation of where you're fined? And I still think the reason we initiate fines is not money for the county, it's supposed to be a deterrent. You'll do things right because I don't want to pay a fine. It doesn't have to call for, I don't think so, of the county that much, but maybe that's not a deterrent. The write-up isn't clear, and I've discussed this with my colleagues up here, and I didn't know if I'm just dense, or sometimes I struggle trying to wrap my arms around what something means. And you've got legal terms in here that you just have to understand, like grading, and I put that in my notes here, but then also the word affidavit that came up. These are things that you pointed out tonight that allows us to understand this a little bit more. And I want to say thank you for giving us that opportunity, and that's what it's all about.
Thank you, Commissioner Shilson.
Although I just, you know, we do, if this is an occupancy, we are an occupational licensing body. There's 55 of 57 of them in the county already. You need a license to do about everything. It's proven that licensing limits entrepreneurship. And if this license means anything, I possess a couple of state licenses, and I didn't take an open book test to get any of them. I have to show that I'm financially able to take care of mistakes that I make. The licensing board has a recovery fund, so when you become an occupational licensing body, it's a pretty big thing. The bad thing about this license is it is of no value to anyone. I've already said that if some people want to be recognized as having a license, if those people want to recognize that, go to Raleigh and get your license. Get a license that's recognized throughout the state, not some little piece of paper that says, "I've taken an open book test and I know how to put up a seal fence." That's of zero value to anybody. And I'm in the business. I've been in it. I watched the initial program. When it was up, it was a failure. I won't use, well, it was never an adequate program. I've seen people go out and ruin land, and I've been on site, and all they had to do was come and get a license. Come out of the building enforcement office and pick up your license, pay you $25, whatever. It didn't work for five, 10, 15 years, and Macon County didn't fall off the mound. The creeks are not full of mud, so worth the credence to say that it's, we need this now, and it's going to save Macon County in the future. And I'm a property owner in Macon County. I'm blessed to be a property owner, and as most of you are blessed to be property owners in Macon. It's the biggest investment we'll make in our lifetime. I'm not going to do anything that will damage or degrade the value or the beauty of my property. And by saying that, I trust in the knowledge of the individual property owner that he's going to protect his property. You cannot, now, you'll always have an ignorant person out there that's going to do something, yes, that damages his neighbor. You can't legislate immorality or morality or ignorance. If we had 10 of these programs in place, it's not going to keep those fluke things from happening. In the body of the Erosion Control Ordinance, there's already a penalty. There's already a program to handle severe cases, seven cases, $5,000 a day, depending on what the administrator. He can fine you up to $5,000 every day that that violation occurs. So why would we want to go from $5,000 to $500 a day? If you read the Erosion Control Ordinance, there are provisions in this local ordinance, there's provisions in state ordinances, the Corps of Engineers, there's many people, regulatory agencies that regulate our water. And we, as Macon County landowners, I think, love our waters and our streams more than anybody else, and I'll place my faith in those individual landowners any day before I'll place it into a document that is vaguely written and just seems to me to be to exert a little more control, governmental control, over what I can do as a conscientious landowner.
I guess first off, I'd like to recognize Jack and the planning board, the work that's been done to this. Probably been on the planning board, you know, I'm rarely going to test this year. I'd be pretty fit to skin because you ask to work on things, they're presented to the county commissioners, and sometimes they sit on them, sometimes they act on them, and sometimes they get shot for home despite your best efforts. So thank you to everyone involved. Secondly, thank you to everyone who came out tonight and gave a comment. It is absolutely imperative that when this body is considering anything that affects the citizens of Macon County, we got to have citizen input. I would encourage you to come to the planning board meeting when these issues are discussed, when these meetings are open, and believe me, I've been in the open. Nobody was a tickled, somebody shows up and talks, so I just encourage everyone to come out and give your input. Your input is crucial in our improvement, okay? And while I'm tickled you're here tonight and we're getting to this point, I would love to see it early on. I would love to see this type of input when we're discussing any type of issues early on and help mold that, help make it into something that represents our community as a whole. So the best way for that to happen is, you know, get on board early, and I can't play head and shoulders. You know, there's been some valid, a lot of great points brought up tonight. I think a lot of those points, we can sit down one-on-one and go through and address those points and add clarity to it. I think there's some of those points that deserve some clarity in the form of language in this thing. There may be some things that need to come out. That's what we're going to have to determine. But I think we've got something to work with, we've got some great input that we can incorporate into that, and we have all that are on the ground and be pleased with, whether it's there or not. Well, I'll have to. Thank you. Anyone else? Eric?
No, just, again, thank everybody for coming and that's going through the process. A lot of times, policy's like making sausage. It's ugly when it's going on, but it comes out sausage, and that's a very, this is a very crucial part of that process. It's ugly and it don't look like sausage when you're doing it, but it eventually looks like sausage, which is what I think Carl's saying, again, very valuable part of this process of the, of the public policy process, and this is what it's all about. Governments never, never operates better until it's operating alongside the citizens. And so just...
You have to wait for the contractor to put it back on to the public, to the landowners. That's what's got turned around. You know, to the landowners, he can't do that on his property. That's what, you pay the tax if you do it.
I want to thank everyone for coming again. If y'all would like to slip out, please feel free. I would like to have one more to save this abundant contention with a couple of remarks that were said tonight that I have. I've been on, I've been a commissioner now, I believe, for six years. Anyone out here venture to guess how many new ordinances this board has passed, how many new rules and regulations? I heard that we keep passing them. How many have we passed since I've been on board? One. We passed one. We made a recreation park back over, that's some of the ones we're thinking about. They have reduced, reduced a few, so just wanted to bring that up. All right. Y'all are welcome to hang out with us. We're going to be discussing a lot more county business, so feel free to slip out. I'll give y'all a visit, leave in a few minutes before we start back.